Well, good evening. I'm going to call this council work session for February 6th to order. And I want to mention, as we do our roll call, that Councilor Kizer is not here tonight, but she would like to be. And she will be watching and listening to the work session and public comments as she's back in Salem. She just wants folks to know that. So, she wishes us well.
We're all waving hi to Kara.
Oh, okay. Everyone wave hi to Kara. Okay, excellent. Now, if the -- Courtney, would you call the roll?
Councilor Kizer is absent. Councilor Anderson?
Present.
Councilor Nanki?
Here.
Councilor McCoyd?
Here.
Councilor Osick?
Here.
Councilor Cook?
Here.
Councilor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Okay, and I'm going to give you a quick rundown on how this will work. This is a little different than we've done our council work sessions in the past. We'll have a staff presentation from Alan Danen from Public Works. We'll then go to public comment. You have a staff report to work off of. Then we'll have council discussion and questions. And probably the biggest difference is, we're going to have, as I mentioned, we're going to have public comment. I think that these work sessions will be improved with additional comment from the public. And we will follow the same rules we always do on the three minutes. So if folks who are going to comment from the public would just pay attention to the light, if it goes red, please just stop. And then we'll -- most folks can figure out when it goes yellow, you've got a minute. When it goes red, stop, please. And then I won't have to ask you to stop. Seems like a more polite way to go. So, yes?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor. Council, are we going to ask questions of the people who are testifying or just to the staff?
No, of both.
Okay.
And the way we'll do it, Counselor, is at the end, if you don't mind, unless it's just a real quick question with a very short answer, just clarification. What we'd like to do is when we're done, we'll just make sure anybody that you'd like to ask a question, if they're still here, can come up and answer those questions.
You mean at the end of the public testimony, we'll ask the questions?
Yeah, we'll do it. Then we'll start questions. Okay? Great. Okay, everybody clear on how we're going to go on this? Sorry?
They're already on.
Okay. Y'all ready? Good. Alan?
Well, actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to start things off. And then I'll be followed by Chief Moore, and then Alan Danen from Public Works will be our closer.
Great.
First, I want to thank you, Mayor and Counselors, for the opportunity to present you in the public with information regarding a new police facility and on seismic and other improvements to the Civic Center and Library. Our presentation tonight will be short to allow sufficient time for public comment and for Counselor questions and discussion while being, if at all possible, respectful of your two-hour meeting timeframe. After voters said no in November to the $82 million ballot question, we went back, staff went back to review ways of reducing the size and cost of a police facility. Also, council had directed that an engineering evaluation of the Civic Center and Library seismic needs be completed. That evaluation was completed last month. Staff's review, which Chief Moore and Alan will go into in more detail, our review was guided by keeping a police facility under $82 million and whether the library and Civic Center could be included for under that same $82 million threshold. Another essential consideration for us was to have a rational and reasonable way or ways of reducing the size of the police facility, ways that would not compromise the police department's functionality and operations. I believe, as does the staff, that the options presented to you tonight accomplish those objectives. The recommended option is a $69 million police facility. If council believes including the library and Civic Center are essential to a successful bond measure, the recommended option is a $64 million police facility and the $15 million for library seismic and major deferred maintenance items. And again, staff will go into greater detail on those options for you this evening. And we're also joined tonight by other staff who can help answer questions that weren't part of the formal presentation. So now Chief Moore will speak to the facilities, reduce size, and department functionality, followed by Alan, who will speak to the library and Civic Center seismic.
Thank you, Manager Powers. Mayor Bennett, Council, thank you for being here. I appreciate your attention to this. I think this is year 10 of mine for working on a police facility, so hopefully it'll be the last year. As the city manager indicated, last November, we went out for a bond measure for a new police facility. And that was based on a task force recommendation, City Council's direction to hire a consultant to look at what the city police department needed for a police facility. As you all know, that ballot measure failed, lost by about 1,600 votes, but clearly that didn't change the fact that we still need a new police facility. Staff tried to listen to the comments. We paid attention to what was said before, as we were going through the process. We looked at a variety of reasons why that measure failed, and certainly some of those thoughts involved the fact that the bond measure was very expensive and the size of the facility was very large. Some of those thoughts during those discussions had to do with the 911 center, 30- or 40-year growth of the police facility, and parking. So that is exactly where we started. As you can see in both this and the alternative, the other alternative program, we have eliminated the 911 center from the police facility plans. I will tell you, that was not my first choice. I truly believe the 911 center belongs in there, but I do understand the discussion and the questions about the 911 center and the fact that we do serve 29 police and fire agencies, and only two of those were involved in paying for the construction of that 911 center in the facility. So, well, that's -- we'll have to look at what the future of the 911 center dictates, and that's probably not a discussion for today, but it is something that we're clearly going to have to address down the road at some point. We've reduced the growth factor in both of these programs. The 126,000-square-foot alternative has a growth factor of 1.8 officers per year, and the 115,000 program has a growth factor of one officer per year. I will tell you that in the last 44 years, we've added 82 police officers, and so that comes out to a growth factor of 1.86 officers per year. And we've had a lot of numbers bandied about in growth factors and such, but if you're looking at the past, that's exactly what the growth factor was. I don't think there's anyone in this room knows exactly what the future will hold, but I will tell you, I think that's a legitimate number that you can at least get your arms around, but that is something that you will have to consider as you look at these two alternatives. I will tell you, as far as growth, there's been a lot of discussion about technology and crime going down, and will we actually need more police officers? And I would suggest you just turn on the television sometime and take a look around what's going on in this world, because I've noted, in this community, people like to see face-to-face contact with their police officers, and I don't think -- I think it's one of the reasons we're as well thought of as we are, and I think that we certainly need to consider growth as we move forward. Finally, we reduced parking in the facility. You will note, we did not eliminate the parking pad on the second level, and I will tell you, that is more for the efficiency and the functionality of police operations than any other reason. I've discussed, on a couple of occasions, I believe, that there's a variety of factors that police officers involved in, whether it's processing evidence and dropping it off at a drive-through evidence portion of a facility, to having patrol officers carrying their gear to and from their cars throughout their shift. I've watched officers for the 30-some years that I've been here carry 60 pounds of equipment up and downstairs, back and forth every day. And so, the reason for the pad was the functionality of allowing our police officers to take their gear, walk right out of the facility, and get to their cars. So, that's why that is still involved. I know you've heard a lot of discussion about the cost and the size, and so we have looked at ways to reduce that as we move forward, and those two alternative programs are what we came up with. I will tell you, for those of you that are new, that I've said this many times, a police facility is a working building. The day it opens, it's never going to close. It's going to be available 24/7, 365 days a year, and it's going to be filled with activity on every one of those days, whether it's victims, or suspects, or volunteers, or employees. I will tell you also that it's not an office building, because office buildings don't contain crime labs, armories, evidence, holding cells, canine kennels, and have the variety of people that we have inside our police facility. So, I tell you that because, as we talk about moving forward with a professional police facility that will serve the needs of this community for the next 30 years, I think it's important that you consider that. I mentioned growth very quickly, but I will tell you, you build it too small, we're going to be faced with what we've been faced with for the last 34 years in this facility, I think. So, I appreciate your time, and I'll certainly be available to answer any questions you have, but I'd like to introduce Alan Danen.
Thanks, Chief, Mayor, City Counselors. Alan Danen with Public Works. My job tonight is to respond to the direction received back in June or July of last year and update the seismic assessments of the Civic Center and the library buildings. And then I'll also be reviewing the costs associated with those improvements. Both efforts are updating reports that had already been done throughout the course of this project. We'll start with the Civic Center, and that report was done by BMGP Engineers, finished up back in 2011. That firm is now known as MSC Engineers, and they did the update for us as well that was just completed. One key thing to note, especially as we go further through the presentation and talk about costs, is with the Civic Center, we're talking about a substantially different scope than we were back in 2010, 2011. So those of you may remember, at that time, we were talking about a facility here on campus, and what that meant was complete demolition of the council chambers where we now are, and a total demolition and rebuild of the existing parking structure. That's not the case anymore. We're talking about a police facility off-site, and so we asked MSC to make sure to include those structures in this current evaluation so that we can address the needs for the entire facility here. One other element that we'll talk about is the canopy out here over the courtyard, and that's going to play a key role, just as it did back then. So, one of the first, before I advance here, one of the first key assumptions, and this is stated clearly in the report, is for the police to move out of the facility gives us the ability to then design the upgrades for this facility to a lesser seismic standard. There's a good discussion of this in the report. A facility occupied by police is supposed to be designed to an immediate occupancy standard, meaning that the building can function immediately after the earthquake, and the police can do their job right out of there, or any other emergency responders. If the police are in a different facility, then we can use a life safety standard for this building, meaning that the building may have damage, may need repairs after the event, but it will be structurally sound and allow everybody to exit the building safely. So, that right off the bat provides a benefit, and also affects the timing of the work you can do here, because we need the police in their new facility before that work could commence, at least most efficiently. So, looking quickly at the work that MSC did, this is just a clip from the report of the existing structure as it stands now with the roof intact. And the scale of colors here is meant to represent the deformation or movement that each element of the building model experiences in the designed seismic event. And the scale goes from smallest in the pink and purple range to largest in the blue and green range. Not surprisingly, we see the biggest movement in the roof structure in the top levels of the building. It's exactly what you'd expect in a building that's designed like this. And so the first key finding from the report, really, is that just like we were thinking back in 2011, the roof really should be removed from the structure. There's no practical, cost-effective way to really seismically brace that structure, and the skylight window system is essentially, at the end of its useful life, would need to be replaced in any event. It's more cost-effective to demolish that structure, and just doing that in and of itself would give us a tremendous seismic benefit in terms of the safety of this structure, even if we didn't do any other upgrades. So that's step one. But what it means is, we no longer have weather protection over the courtyard, and so there's additional repairs or upgrades that would be required to deal with the stormwater and the effect of the environment on the courtyard. Those improvements were not figured into the seismic cost in the past 2010, 2011 effort. They were wrapped into different areas of the cost estimate, so we pulled those out and brought them back in here.
So, just a point of clarification, you're talking about removing the skylight roof and not replacing it, but just updating the ground floor features to be able to be more weather tolerant? Is that correct?
Right, and essentially handle the additional drainage. Now we just have leaks through the window, but now we'd be talking about, you know, a day like today, the full-on rain event right down onto the floor. So, it would be waterproofing the slab, but also a drainage system to get the rest of the water off of the surface. The other elements that would be required per MSC's recommendations, and this is similar to the past report, is to add concrete shear walls, essentially walls that go from foundation clear to the roof, that add horizontal stiffness and strength to the structure and allow it to better resist the earthquake. You may know that the building's divided into three wings, are west, east, and center, and those are isolated from each other right now by two-inch joints. What we would do is put shear walls in each wing to give each wing additional strength. In addition, MSC has recommended that we essentially remove those expansion joints, pin the joints together, and allow the structure to act as one more massive structure, and they can actually reduce the deformation that you saw in that previous model by doing that. In addition, we'd add a little bit of shear wall element to the existing columns for the council chambers where we stand now, and they're not shown here, but there would be similar improvements to the parking structure. So, what does that all mean in terms of cost? And there were some questions about this, leading up to the meeting, and the appendix L. from the report, which got added to your materials, shows how we came to the cost estimate. I just want to talk about that for a minute. We asked a local contractor to look at the work that we were talking about, again, not just the shear wall elements that we looked at last time, but also the demolition of the roof structure, also updating the waterproofing for the entire deck structure clear from the courtyard out to the parking garage, and then restoring the concrete surface and landscaping that's here now. Those costs provided by our contractor were then, and it's stated clearly in the report, those are just for construction of those items alone. They don't even deal with the other costs that a contractor would include, such as their overhead and profit, bonds and insurance, costs that it might make to come in and actually stay and do the work. So, our consultant, MSC, recommended some amounts to mark those numbers up by, also include for design, et cetera, et cetera. And that came to a number in the report that's around 12.8, 12.9 million. You'll notice that the number we included here is a little less, and that's only because I adjusted those factors, marking up the contractor's work to be more in line with what we've used for the police facility project and everything else that we've done here along the way. So, that's the reason for the slight difference there.
And this is just Civic Center, not the library?
Correct. We'll get to the library next. Also included here, and again, contrasting with the work we did before, so when we looked at seismic before, we looked to sort of try to get away with the least improvements to the building as possible. We assumed a first-floor renovation, because we knew the police would be moving out in that scenario as well, and minimal repairs to the second and third floor to essentially fix up the damage we do with the seismic work. What we've done this time is to try to provide, at least for consideration, and working with our facilities department, the entire list of needs for the building, because there are many. There's a lot of repairs, 26 total between these three line items, that are coming due or are due for the facility. So, building envelope includes things like roof, windows, ADA improvements, those types of things, electrical, not surprisingly, wiring and lighting, and mechanical is HVAC, elevators, and plumbing, types of repairs. So that represents the list of 26 projects that Facilities has identified that are due for the structure. Again, there's an approach to try to minimize those, but the most cost-effective way to get that work done is while you've got the building ripped up, to get as much of that work done as you can. Similar to if you're renovating your house and you find a plumbing problem, you don't want to close that back up and leave it in poor condition and have to come back and rip out your new work in a couple of years. Be the same thinking. Yes, please?
Alan, can you clarify or go back over the building changes, building improvements that we believe would be needed because the atrium is being removed?
Sure. So, with the atrium being removed, the deck would need new waterproofing layer, that's included. It would need to be resurfaced with a new concrete or paver surface. In addition, you'd need to deal with weather impacting the walkways, and also impacts on the HVAC system, right? There'd be increased thermal load on different sections of the building, so you need to make sure that your HVAC is sized appropriately. And those systems, quite honestly, are reaching the end of their useful life anyway, so a replacement could easily deal with those improvements.
Alan, on this, with this completed, what, do you have any estimate for the, how long the life of this building then is extended, useful life of this building?
Right. So, working with our consultants along the way here, what we've heard pretty consistently is the structure has good bones, it's worth reinvesting in, and by doing these seismic improvements and as many of the other improvements as you can, you could add 40 years of additional life.
Okay.
Just to close this out, we have continued to include first-floor renovation. This is very similar to the amount that was included in the prior budget, just adjusted slightly because we're talking about a later construction time than we were before. A little bit of additional money for upgrading the exterior plaza. When that's opened up to the elements, there's opportunities to maybe better, to improve wayfinding, provide landscaping, that kind of thing, to make the space a little more pleasant, so that's an allowance there. And then we've also included an assumption that we won't be able to house all city departments in the building all the time while this work is going on, so have an estimate of cost to lease some off-site facilities and move people in and out while this work is going So that summarizes the Civic Center work. Talking about the library, so this MSC provided a peer review of the existing report for us. The scope of that work has not changed from what we were recommending back in 2014 is when this report got finished up, but we asked them just to look it over and make sure that they felt like there was nothing missing, or glaring errors, or anything that we should consider differently from when the report was done. They found that the report was carried out adequately, and they have a couple of recommendations for things we can address during the next phase of design when the project goes forward, and, but all in all, showed that the findings were still sound. So, the work at the library, very similar to the work to seismically upgrade the Civic Center, provide new shear wall elements that go from basically the foundation level all the way up to the roof, and add stiffness and strength to resist the horizontal forces from an earthquake. Other minor improvements to strengthen connections between the building wings and the roof connection to the building walls and those kind of things.
Alan, could you just orient us to where we are with this?
Sure.
I think I know.
Main entrance right here.
Okay.
This is the main level, so the stairs down to where Anderson Room is would be right in this vicinity.
And is Locks Auditorium, it's not?
Locks Auditorium is right here. And there's minor improvements recommended to Locks as well, again, to stabilize the roof structure and a few other connections that need to be reinforced. But the bulk of the work is right here in adding horizontal resistance to the main structure.
Are the locks improvements included in the?
They are, yes, they are. Also included, what's actually broken out as a separate line here, is what it would take to similarly upgrade the library parking structure. So, these numbers were based, basically came from the same cost estimate that was provided in the 2014 report. They've been updated to, again, bring them into line with the same cost factors we've been using for all our other work, and account for the fact that we're talking about a different year of construction. There's about 16 projects between building envelope, electrical repairs, and mechanical repairs that Facilities has identified for this structure. The roof is one of the big ones for the building envelope here, and then we talked about the parking structure. That summarizes the findings from the report. Be happy to take any questions you may have.
We may have some after we hear from others.
I'll just have a few closing comments, and then our presentation will be done. A couple of points I'd like to emphasize, we have shared with you, both in the written staff report and tonight, the detail and estimates that were arrived at for the reduced police facility options and for the library and Civic Center. I believe those estimates, I know those estimates and that information were prepared by knowledgeable, experienced professionals and provide, I think this is a really key point, current and all-inclusive costs. The chief, I think, was very straight with you, that while the reduced-sized options for a police facility are not ideal, the options we have presented to you are workable for the residents, for the visitors to the police facility that the chief mentioned, and for our officers for the next 30 years. We believe the library's seismic and deferred maintenance needs are straightforward and can be addressed if council chooses without impacting other city operations and facilities. The expense and complexity for the Civic Center, for the city hall, which Alan referred to, we think are not feasible, and really, well, at least not feasible for a May 2017 ballot question, and really require more time and expense than the May 17 ballot timelines allow. And speaking to that, despite at least 10 years of planning, community involvement, and council discussion, this month is the deadline for a go-no-go decision for the May 16th, 2017. 16, 2017 election. A decision on what to place before the voters, if anything, needs to be made this month, preferably at your February 13 meeting. Your last meeting of the month on February 27 is the last opportunity for a resolution declaring the city's intent to submit a measure to the voters. If you find that, for whatever reasons, that May is not feasible, if it's too much, too soon, I believe we would, the city would have, if you will, competition on the November 2017 ballot, so that is a consideration as you weigh the pros and cons of proceeding in May versus a later election date. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, we're really pleased to be able to share this information with you and really engage in some discussion on whatever parts of the information you would like.
Great. Thank you very much. Now, normally, we just start talking to each other and to the, but with your permission, I'd like to go ahead with staff, with public comment on this, and then we'll move forward from there. So, I'm going to call Jeffrey James.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm a fairly positive person, so I'm going to start off with a series of yeses because I think the devil's in the details, but I agree, it took me a while to agree to this, but I agree with the downsized to 115,000 square feet for the police facility. I agree with the $5.5 million land purchase to be concluded, maybe in May, of the O'Brien site as the site for this facility. I agree with the $15 million seismic retrofit, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a while. And I agree that we should proceed with the public safety bond measure in May as soon as possible because I'm very much, and has been for the, was it 10 years, in favor of this facility. So, yeah, the devil's in the details, so I provided you with a seven-page report and some supplements, and I finally got Appendix L of the MSC structural report today, and so I think that's been distributed. The, I'm modeling my critique on the Beaverton Police Facility that on the night that ours failed, theirs passed, there's $35 million bond measure for 90,000 square feet. They used what turns out to be the state average for new police facilities in Oregon is about $400. They set the budget at $389 per square foot for the total project costs, including solar collectors and contingencies and furnishings and everything. And so, the other thing that is, Alan told us at the, on the task force, which I showed on for a year, that the seismic is $15 million. Using the MSC figure that we learned today of $7.5 million for the structural repair, plus the previous report from Berger of 6.5 for the library, that is 13.8 million, and so under the 15. I would say, I would say stress, do the seismic, the net structural work, and avoid all these extra remodel costs because you see the numbers up there, 29 for this building and 15 for the library? We can't afford that. That would destroy this bond measure. So, I say, go ahead with the $15 million of net structural seismic, save those lives, stop this building from collapsing when they, when it starts shaking for five minutes.
Thank you, Jeff.
So, I see my time's up, and maybe you have some questions later?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm John Hawkins. I live at 5539 Bellflower Court, southeast in Salem. Like many residents, I was disappointed with the loss last November of the ballot measure to approve bonds to build the new police center for the city. I emailed Chief Jerry Moore and asked what I could do to help pass a measure should it go before the voters again. I wondered in the email if the two sides couldn't come to some consensus so we can build a center that everyone agrees is needed. Soon after, I was in a room of like-minded people, and we set about finding an acceptable solution. I interviewed police department officials and people who opposed the measure last fall. We were just gathering information, and those who were critical of last fall's bond measure were involved in our research as early as December 6. 10 days ago, we learned that the city officials were preparing options for the council to make decisions. A week ago today, the city manager and the police chief presented those options to our group. We had a spirited discussion and we reached a position that seemed to unite all parties, a 115,000-square-foot police center and seismic upgrade to the city library, with the understanding that police building costs would be carefully controlled and that seismic upgrade of City Hall would follow within five years. That is one of the options before you today, and we support your moving in that direction. The guiding principle for our group has been that we want a police center that meets the needs of Salem and the police department for the next 30 or 40 years. We are prepared to gather resources and form a political action committee to advocate for a passage of the bond measure on May 16. We eagerly await your decision so we can get to work on our project. I'm happy to answer questions at the appropriate time. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, John. Paul Rice.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Paul Rice, and I live in West Salem, have since 2008, lived in Salem since 2004. My background was involved in rural development in California, involved a lot of facilities. Anyway, I was a member of Mayor Peterson's task force. I was new to the whole issue of the police department. In fact, when I was introduced to Jerry Moore, he was in civilian clothes, I didn't have the slightest idea who he was. And so, it was from, it started ground zero in terms of an education process. The tour of the various police facilities in this area was enlightening, to say the least, and touring of the current Salem Police Facility was disappointing in many, many ways. I was, after all the presentations by nationwide experts, engineering firms, in terms of what was recommended, I was fully in full support of the bond issue. I thought it was reasonable. The reality is, you cannot build public safety buildings on the cheap. It's like building a hospital. They have to be able to perform in emergencies, and the costs are just what they are. The counterarguments that you could build on the cheap or a downsize that what's needed is just, you may be saving money in the short run, but you're going to cost big time in the long run. The Statesman Journal gave about a four-page article just before the election, I think a little late because some people probably already voted, that gave a comprehensive, detailed picture of their support of the facility, and I thought it was very well-presented. While including the 911 Center would have been nice and appropriate, it's not critical of the operation of the police, and I feel that it's appropriate to take it out in order to reduce the funds. We have to consider that Salem is the capital of Oregon, and while it has not experienced the rapid growth of the Portland metro area, I guarantee you, having lived in California, the time is coming. It's too nice, it's too affordable for Salem not to see at the time when it's going to grow. And the fact that we have public safety officers working in such substandard conditions should be an embarrassment, really, to the community, and I hope we can move forward with this. I fully hope, and I see evidence of that, the fact that the city council and the community will get behind to make sure that we provide a facility that's decent and will stand for us to move forward into the future and not just, because costs are only going to go up, construction costs will go up, financing costs will go on up. So, any further delay, and that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rice.
Thank you.
And if you'll be available for questions. David Turner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is David Turner, and my wife and I have been residents in Salem for almost 40 years. We watched the last issue with the police facility unfold, and from that, I come before you this evening with some positives first. I agree that the police need a new facility, and I agree that the Civic Center needs retrofitting for the seismic improvements, and I agree that we should proceed with a bond measure as soon as is prudent, and by that I mean, let's not rush it. If May is not a good time or too soon, and we don't have everything in place, then we may have to wait a little bit. It's been since the 70s, so we can probably wait a week or two or month longer. For the council, I have one observation and one question that I'd like to leave with you. First of all, my observation, if the facility is still going to be on the O'Brien lot, I believe no parking garage is necessary. There's a perfectly workable parking garage within a block. I think most people can walk that distance. Also, I don't believe that there's any pad or any other structure necessary, or presumably we'll be working elevators within the building that will shuffle people from level to level. If those things are still there in the final plan, then my vote will be no. My question for the council is this, what steps will you take before and during the project so that we don't have another Courthouse Square debacle with shoddy construction? I watched that dilemma unfold as well. I thought it was reprehensible, that no one was disciplined for it, and when it came down to the final result, what did we do? We blamed the engineer who was conveniently dead. That disgusted me at a level that I had not yet seen before with city and county governments. So, let's not do that. Let's have a competent project manager, let's get it assigned out and watched, and let's have a very good contract. I've dealt with construction contracts, I know it can be done. So, if I'm not convinced that those protections are in place when this project comes before the voters, again, my vote will be no. So, thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, David.
Good evening, Madam, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council.
I got Kaltwasser right.
I have to.
You have to get my gender correct.
Yeah, I was going to say, thank you very much for getting that right.
Gender is there.
I live in Ward Eight, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Salem Community Vision as their official spokesperson. First of all, we want to thank you for bringing this issue back to consideration to go out again for another bond. We also want to thank you for not including the 911 Center in the new proposal, and also to include the seismic upgrades for the library, at least under option two. And we appreciate that you are finally listening to us regarding reducing the size. We feel like you're headed in the right direction. However, the square foot cost, in our opinion, is still not justified and is too high. Salem citizens should not be paying more per square foot than other Oregon residents are paying for their police facilities. If they can do it, we can do it. Right now, you're about $100 more in your estimates than Beaverton was paying, so we need to do some more work in that area. We're trying to think, not in terms of what we would like to have for the police department, what would be optimal, but we're trying to think as an average citizen. 43% of Salem residents' households earn less than $40,000 a year, and 20% earn less than $20,000 a year. When they look at bonds, they don't look at what would be nice to have, they look at what can I afford? And they know that there's a bond coming for the school district, they've already had their water and their sewer increased, they've already had their other expenses. So, when you come down with the bottom line of what the bond's going to be, whether it includes this or that or whatever, it really needs to be in the $60 million range, we feel. We do not support including the parking structure, and we, I see my thing is, so it's distracting me, and we believe that the size of the facility can be reduced below no more than 100,000 square feet. In my neighborhood, I will just give a personal comment, they're not sold on this large centralized police facility. They want something that meets the current needs, maybe 10 or 20 years out, and they are hoping that the city philosophy will move towards precincts that they can build incrementally.
Great, thank you, Suzanne.
Brian Hines, 10371 Lake Drive, southeast Salem. So, since I led the fight against Measure 24399, I'm now here to give you advice about how we can pass the bond measure. As Suzanne said, you are indeed on the right track. The library seismic reinforcing was a big deal for citizens. I think there were many votes against it because that wasn't included, they didn't see any sense in saving police lives and not saving everybody's lives. The size being reduced to 115,000 square feet, I think that's a ceiling. I think that's a very good move, taking out the 911 Center. I think the issue that remains is the cost per square foot, and I will address Chief Moore's comment about the growth factor. I've done a lot of looking at these statistics. He's absolutely right, the past 44 years have been 1.8 officers per year, the past 30 years have been 1.0 officers per year, so it's, at what time span you look at that you determine what will be the growth of officers. I spent the weekend looking at, and more closely, at Beaverton and looking at all the data that I could find. I sent you a copy of a blog post I wrote last night, I sent you another email that essentially is testimony that I won't go into all the details. I mean, what strikes, what comes out at me is that you have reduced the price of the police facility in the 115,000-square-foot proposal to $64 million, $18 million under 82. Now, this figure of 15 million adds back in 15, so now we're just $4 million under. I worry that when citizens see a 78 million, anything in the 70s is going to say, wait, didn't we just vote on that? They won't recognize that they're getting library seismic upgrades, or many of them won't. The thing about Beaverton is that, and I don't mean to insult the R group who's sitting behind me, but I probably will, their figure, the cost figures that are currently before us are exactly the same per square foot, the total construct, total development costs per square foot that they were before, you know, over $500. Even when you take out the cost of land because Beaverton had city-owned land and they didn't need that. So, Beaverton built for $389 per square foot without land. When I calculated that for Salem, it's $504 without land on the new proposal. That's 30% more than the Mackenzie Group, the architectural firm that designed the Beaverton facility, was able to build a police facility that the police chief in Beaverton says will meet their needs for the next 30 years. Another interesting point is that the size of the facility, the number of square feet per officer, is almost exactly the same for the 115,000-square-foot police facility in Beav, I mean, in Salem, 635 square feet, as it is in Beaverton, 657 square feet, based on officers from FBI reports for 2014. So, they say that this meets Beaverton needs for $389 per square foot for 30 years, and I don't see why Salem can't do the same or better. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Dan Clem.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Dan Clem. I'm speaking to you as a citizen tonight. My address is 1050 Terrace Drive Northwest. I applaud you bringing this forward and looking at seriously what this community needs. This community has needs that have grown over the years. This community continues to grow, a little bit less than 2% per year in population. This community continues to grow, a little bit less than 2% per year in population, as well as in many other areas. As you look at the options before you, as you look at balancing cost, design, functionality, whether you include the parking or not, as well as the costs that are direly needed at the civic center and the library, ask that you consider a couple of things. One is that growth is inevitable. So a plan that has absolutely no growth planned for it is one that we've already encountered that once before. Eight years after this facility was complete, we knew that it wasn't meeting our needs for the police department, several other departments. We don't want to be making the same mistakes again. So whatever you consider, you've got to consider growth in there. Also, as was mentioned earlier, having adequate construction. Knowing that as you try to take a look at what's the most cost-effective bond measure to put out in front of the voters, we've got to make sure that we don't have a courthouse square, and that if the experts say it's in this range to build what we really need for a police department and for seismic improvements, then make sure that you're not looking at going on the cheap or that you're not going for the too high of a dollar value. The voters said likely many things, but one of those things is that the cost was too high based on the size. So it makes sense that the next bond measure that the city asked voters to approve would be one that considers what the voter said, and that is potentially dropping the price substantially enough for them to notice it. As well, please consider strategies. If 911 is not included, if parking structure is not included, what are those strategies or at least what's the plans to put together strategies, not before February 27th, but soon thereafter? Because the 911 Center will need to be replaced. Seismic improvements, whether they're just the library or the entire civic center, need to be made. And lastly, as a former counselor, I would just ask you that whatever council decides to do puts before the voters, that every member of council would get behind it and support it. Once councils made the decision, honor the process, honor the input, honor what the majority wanted. Come to consensus about what we need, and then everybody on your own, outside of your role as a counselor, but on the council floor and in the public, you represent your decision, whether you got some small piece of it or not. So I would ask that you would get behind whatever this council does and make it happen. With that.
Thank you very much. That's the end of the folks who've signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else who hasn't signed up that would like? Yeah.
My name is Ken Adams. I live in Ward One, 1695 Chomekada. One of the things that happened was the debate at the Salem City Club. And Brian Hines asked T.J. Sullivan why the cost was so much per square foot. He did not answer that question. He talked about something completely different and didn't answer that particular question. And I think that's something that really needs to be addressed. And it's been brought up a couple of times, but the thing is, is you better have a good answer for it. You can't ignore that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, let's take Mr. Adams' challenge first. Would you like to speak to that, Mr. Powers?
Yes, I think either Chief Moore or Allen can provide some additional information regarding our square foot costs.
So let me, let me take a first shot at that answer, and then I may ask Garth Brandow from CB2 to come up and supplement the response. But I guess I want to preface the comments about the cost that we've presented as the goal here has always been, with all the costs that we're presenting, is this is an estimate to do it right the first time. What we don't want to do is be in a position where we don't have enough money, and we're either coming back and asking for more or reducing the scope of what we've promised to do. So we just.
Which is what happened to this building, correct? I mean, this building took two votes, I think, to get built.
I think that's right, yeah. And they wound up having to go out for additional, additional money to, to complete the work. So that's, that's a preface. The other thing that I just want to point out, our design professionals used a Portland-based architectural cost estimator to come up with the $299 per square foot that you see up there. And he did that based on his current take on the local market, understanding, you know, our contractor pool, the subcontractor labor pool, current conditions, his best understanding of that current situation, and the most specifics that we had available about the size of building and the type of uses and how our building was going to get put together. So certainly much more detailed than pulling a cost from another project that's a total cost, that you don't know what's all included or not included, and breaking that down for the square foot of the proposed building. The other thing that I want to point out is some of the other factors here rely on judgment. And one of the ones that, that we asked that cost estimator to help us with was escalation. Where's the market going? And that's where the 9.18% comes from that you see here. He said about 6% a year is what you can expect because of the current market conditions back in last May. So that's, that's what we did. And contingency is another, so that's the factor that you have to prevent you from asking for more or, you know, doing less. And typically, when we go to bid with a public works project, 5% is our minimum. Here, we know much less than we would when we go to bid with the project, and so it's appropriate to have a higher percentage. And often, on public works projects, we would have higher than 9%. So I just want to, I wanted to throw those factors out. And I think maybe Garth from, Garth Brandow from CB2 has some more information regarding the Beaverton project.
Good evening. My name is Garth Brandow. I'm with CB2 Architects at 500 Liberty Street, right across the street here. And first and foremost, I would just like to point out, I've, I've practiced architecture and dealt with construction for over 30 years in the Salem area. And so I can definitely tell you, cost is always the first issue that comes up, and it's always the last issue that comes up. And the difficulty, the complexity of how you manipulate the numbers and deal with the numbers is very, very difficult.
Garth, you might want to share your, your firm's specific relationship to the city on this project.
Okay, sure. And CB2 is the, is working with DLR Architects. We're the local architectural group, working with DLR, who've been hired to, to work on this police facility. So with that being said, and I, and I also recall in the 30-year period, I recall working on projects that were $60 a square foot. I'm sure Jeff can recall this as well. And so escalation is a very real thing, and, and the way that costs are ferreted out really need to be understood. And so with that in mind, I've been given the opportunity or the challenge to explain how the disconnect works between the Salem numbers that you see up here and what Jeff and Brian and your group have presented to you. And so the spirit of that, the common denominator here happens to be the Beaverton facility. The Beaverton facility, which was just voted in, it's a very good comparison. It was successful. It's a police facility. There are some differences, but from a cost-per-square-foot standpoint, what I'd like to do is just attempt to walk through what the, what the differences are here that make up for that disconnect or added prices, okay? So first of all, the sheet in front of you is the very good, is a very good one to look at. To first and foremost, just talk about the allocation of costs. And the first thing that I'd like to point out is that the first number, which is line item A, is what's considered in the industry to be the hard construction costs. That's $299 a square foot. That represents about 56% of the overall cost that we're talking about for the project, not including land, okay? The other number that you grouped together would be items B and C. That would be the parking structure construction and the site and demolition construction. So basically, that's site costs. Whether you have parking structure or whether you have surface parking, that, that is the number. When you add those numbers together, you have 9.6% of the overall cost. And then the final groupings of number, less the land acquisition costs of 5.4 million, is about 31.5% of the overall project. And there seems to be more mystery related to that 31% than, than anything else here. And I'm going to attempt to just explain it. First of all, we've got recent information on the Beaverton project from the Salem Police Department discussion with, with the Beaverton Police Department. We have more recent information, factual information, on what the cost breakdown was for that Beaverton facility. And so the first and foremost has to do with the line item A, which is the hard construction costs. Their price was $270 a foot for the hard construction cost. As you'll note here, we have $299 a square foot. So there's a $29 a square foot add for Salem. What does that mean? What that means is that there's $29 more per square foot due to some very key programmatic spaces that are being envisioned in the Salem project versus the Beaverton project. Those include the crime lab. Beaverton doesn't have a crime lab in their, in their program. The SWAT facility, same thing. And finally, the bomb special team facilities. Those special components, which are more expensive per square foot, do not exist in the Beaverton project, and that helps to explain the difference in that line item cost. That represents, that difference alone represents $3.3 million, okay? And when you, when you look at the overall numbers here, what, what Jeff has presented to you is a $46 million police facility. What this is representing is a $58 million police facility, once you take the land price out of it, okay? So there's a $12 million disconnect. $3.3 million of that is for that hard construction cost. The other difference that's important to note has to do with the site, the site and the parking structure. Now, the site, they have $1 million for their site development cost, which would be, which would be line item C up here that you're looking at. We have almost $3 million for the site costs, site construction cost. The reason for that is really pretty simple. We have a smaller site. It's more of your true redevelopment site, so that you have some, it's a triangular shape. It's more urban. It's much different than what, you have grading issues to deal with. You have some special site features to deal with there. In Beaverton, it's a very flat site, easier to develop. We feel that, that million-dollar number is still very low as well, but that's $2 million difference that we're talking about here. In addition, the parking structure, the parking structure construction, we have a smaller site, but we're trying to put a larger facility on it. I think there's agreement now that the larger facility is needed. Well, in order, at some point, you need to have some structured parking, especially from the standpoint that in this facility, you have specialized folks that need to be in secure parking adjacent to the building. And so that makes a lot of sense to have at least some structured parking. As it's noted before, that's gone down from 123 down to 100 space parking structure. But that represents a $2.6 million add here. So there's another part of the $12 million. The last part that we talk about have to do with escalation and contingency. Those are line items L and N. We have a little over, we have about 9% for each of those columns. That represents almost, it's $9.4 million of the total cost is for escalation and contingency. Now, contingency is money that you have in the project that you will either spend on the project or you will hold back and have monies available for another project, a library project, another project, if you don't spend those. If everything goes well, you don't, in theory, you don't need any contingency, right? And so what, what we've done, when you look at the 9% here, in Beaverton, they had 5% for both escalation and for contingency. And so when you look at the difference there, it totals $5.2 million of difference when you include contingency and escalation. And so in sum, now, when you add those up, you get the $12 million. And I'll just, I'll just repeat it one more time. For the, for the programmatic spaces that are extras, the crime lab, so forth, $3.3 million versus Beaverton extra. For the site and the parking structure, for the additional site costs, $2 million. For the additional parking structure, $2.6 million. And finally, for the soft costs, which are the escalation and contingency, that's a difference of $5.2 million. And so that's, I think it's really, really important to understand the difference here because really, applaud the work that Jeff and, and his group have done as far as pointing out how this should be, and the willingness to say this should be comparable to what other projects should be that have been done in the area, that are, that are good comps. You know, you can always throw a comp out there that's smaller, disconnected, totally different site issues, no parking structure. There's a million ways that it could be different. The challenge is, how do you come together and say, this is the simple difference between these projects, and recognize it, and then have the ability to move forward? And in my discussions that, and I've been involved in the process one way or another for over eight years now on this particular project, it's always come up, there's always been this mystery component. Maybe we should have had this discussion before. Maybe that would have been helpful. But this is really how you boil it down in simple terms to try to understand. I will say that Tim Ganey from DLR Architects is also here as well, and he can speak to more of the specialized program spaces if you'd like, but hopefully, that's of value to you.
Any, thank you, Garth. Any questions on this, on this issue of the Beaverton pricing? Yeah, counselor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I'm doing what I'm doing, and you always call me by the right name, at least up until now.
I try.
Yeah, yeah. I have a question for you, Garth. Thank you. This is a very helpful explanation. And I will tell you, I added up your figures, and I come to 13.1, so you've got a contingency factor there over the 12.6, which is good. You indicated that the parking went down from 123 to 11. I may be mistaken, but I thought the figure was once, to 100, I mean. I thought the figure was 166 down to 100, and maybe the chief could help me on that or.
So.
You have to come here, Deputy Belshaw, sorry.
So Steve Belshaw, Deputy Chief. So you're correct. That was when we had WVCC included in that. And so we eliminated WVCC early on in this discussion, and then as we decided, so that got us down to the 123 parking spots. And then we decided further, how do we cut that down?
So 43, just by eliminating WVCC, 43 out of the 166 go away. And then out of that 123 that Garth was talking about, you took it down 23.
Correct.
I'd like to ask some questions about parking. I don't know if this is the time, or do we want to wait to see?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you know, you go ahead.
Okay. I can see the, you know, I understand and appreciate your discussion, chief, of the need for, the ability for, there able to be some sort of ports or something up on the, on the, the second floor for your officers to get in and out. And I understand that, that issue. I guess there's, so when you reduced it from 120 to 3 to 100, does, how much does that reduce the need for a second story, number one? And I guess this is part of the same thing. And I guess this is part of the same thing, but was there any thought given to a de minimis use of the second story? In other words, someplace to come up there for the bays and for the drop off and maybe, you know, a half dozen, a dozen, 20 spaces up there for that as opposed to just removing 120, removing 66 spaces and having them on two stories?
So programmatically, everybody wants to be on the first floor, and that's just not possible.
Not on the site.
Right. So, or unless you have an enormous building. So, the things that we need on the first floor are things like evidence, the crime lab, and those kinds of things, so the officers can pull up and drop their evidence off, which means on this site, then the patrol division is going to end up on the second floor. So, as you see right now, you'll see the officers carrying their stuff up from the second floor of this building down through the parking lot and that kind of stuff. Programmatically, this works out so that the officers will come from the briefing room straight out onto that parking deck and load up in their patrol cars. What it also does for us is, right now, all of our specialized vehicles that need to be housed in storage, so the SWAT vehicles and all of those that need to be put in buildings that are seven miles away, three miles away at the city shops, those kinds of things, will now be housed on-site underneath that parking structure. So, now that cuts our response time because they won't have to be housed in a building out the city shops, or an old fire station, or somewhere else.
So, if you're saying that if in, you know, one of the proposals that I made early on in this was to remove all 166 spaces and put parking at the Marion Parkade, but what you're saying is, if that were to happen, the other vehicles you were just talking about are still going to have to be parked at remote locations?
Offsite, yes.
Then, the final question I have about parking is, someone who testified earlier discussed the use of elevators to get the officers from their patrol down to the first floor instead of having to carry things up and down the stairs. I'm just wondering if you could respond to that.
Sure, and it's possible, but again, we're trying to, response time is our big goal. So, on the average day, the officers have time from briefing to get out there and carry their stuff down. But on the day where you see the officer sprinting across the parking lot carrying his briefcase, that's a day you want to get out of the way, and that means life's hanging the balance, and it's an emergency response.
So, in your view, there's a public safety element needing to have officers able to, on the second floor, to get out to their vehicles on the second floor?
Correct.
As opposed to, I guess, I don't know how this would work, but as opposed to the officers going out, getting their vehicle on the first floor, driving it up the second floor, and then carrying their things out?
Right.
Which would be a reason why my thought about only a few parking spaces out there would really not be helpful, because you need the cars there in order to get the response time help that you need.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a bunch of other questions, but it's not related to the parking, and I'm happy to defer this.
Well, let's see if anyone has any, just take a break out for a second, and anyone Counselor Osick, you look, just ready to go.
My question is really more about the political part of how to structure the finance. I mean, we heard a lot of comments about the cost being so similar when we include the two things together and making it maybe look like we're doing the same thing again.
Yeah.
And so, that's really more where I'm curious of how we strategize that to make that, to beat that perception, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Anybody want to take a shot at that? Okay. We'll discuss that in a little bit. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I want to talk about Attachment 3, which is the numbers for the improvements to the Civic Center and Library. I'm not sure who to address the questions to, so I'll just throw it out there. What I'm hearing from the folks that are testifying was that the importance of the seismic update was, is crucial to the voters. But I don't hear that same sense of intensity for things like renovations and electrical repairs. So I just want to make sure that it really doesn't make any sense from a construction, from a building standpoint, to seismically retrofit and not address the other issues, or is it doable? And can it be done as two separate things?
And perhaps Alan, as you respond to that, can provide a little more detail on what is included in the library line items for that question?
Sure. So, I mentioned the big ticket in building envelope for the library is the roof replacement. That's, I think, close to half of that total that you see there. To get back to your earlier question, certainly it's doable to focus on seismic and in that work, just try to patch up the areas that you impact with your seismic retrofits and get out as cheaply as possible. But in that scenario, you're going to be impacting all the major building systems, all the way up to the roof when you build the sheer walls and connect them there, all the way through all the wiring, every time you go through a plumbing chase, disrupting the ceilings, tearing up the carpets. So, you could limit your repairs of those systems to where you impact them and have a project. And that was kind of the approach we took back in 2010, because we were trying to, I guess, get as much done as, as many different elements done as we could in that package. The most cost-efficient way to do it would be to do as many of these repairs as you can while you're going in and disrupting operations, and already doing sort of like-type repairs. You know, if you're replacing wiring where you've impacted it, it's going to be cheaper on a per foot of wiring basis to keep going. Did that get to your question?
Well, I think it does, and I'll say this, I think it makes common sense. Think about repairs you do in your home. You don't fix your roof and not paint your house and have it deteriorate, you don't paint your house and not fix your roof. But on the other hand, we're looking to address the issue and try to get something passed, so we may have to, we may have to get silly about it.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is just more of a, it seems like the questions remain on stewardship and also functionality of the building and the process. Something that stuck out for me when you were going over the cost, looking at the contingency and escalation amounts and how those differed from the Beaverton model, it looks like if you're not necessarily over budgeting for it, but making sure that that's the maximum amount so you don't have to go back to the voter, it piqued my interest to think, is there a plan, if you don't go over, what happens to said dollars? And how that process is maintained in an open manner to make sure that people are aware of what's happening during the process, there are opportunities for review, and opportunities for cost savings as they come along?
Well, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, that is a question I think best addressed to the attorney.
If I may.
You're addressing it to the wrong person.
There's, I think that's really at least a three-part question, and to take the part regarding stewardship and management. Alan, if you could perhaps speak to how we would proceed if we were, when we were successful with the bond measure in terms of the owner's representative and the project management, and then the city attorney can speak to what would be legally permissible for the use of proceeds, and I think that will answer the question.
Thank you, Senator Powers.
Sure. So, part of what we've included in our cost estimate is to hire a professional owner's representative who's experienced in managing these types of projects. And you see a similar approach being taken with the safe building, just over a couple streets, where you bring in a firm that manages the construction for you, and you work with that owner's representative with this budget as the absolute ceiling, just as you said, and work to hit your target the whole way. Hopefully, as things go well and you start to eliminate unknowns from your program and do your design, you maintain some savings, and this is where the city attorney can help us. You can write the bond measure in such a way that those savings could be used for other priorities.
Correct. So, when you send out the bond measure to the voters, you're limited to what the voters have approved. So if you're approving just a single project, you can't use that money for other things. You can't go build streets with it. You can't go build a community center the other side of town, unless you've got specific language in the measure itself that says if there's excess funds, it'll be used for X. And so, a lot of times, what you'll do is you'll add, you may add another item that's related to it. So, for instance, in this last measure, we said specifically it'll be used for construction of the police facility. If there are excess funds, it would have been used for renovations of the police space that's being vacated at City Hall. So for this measure, assuming that the library is added into it, excess funds could be used for Civic Center seismic upgrades or other things at the library or at the police facility that we would specifically expressly include in the bond measure.
And thank you very much, Attorney Atkinson. And just out of curiosity, since there is, it was mentioned the deferred maintenance on the library and the upgrades there. I don't see anyone from the library board here this evening. Did I miss anybody? Okay. Just curious if there was any kind of a statement from that board in support of this, or if they were approached?
I spoke with the librarian, with the library director. I don't know if there was anything brought to the library boards or the friends of the library.
Okay. And, sorry, two-parter. Also, we talked about the staff involved with the police department, and we also know about the numerous volunteer staff and contingency staff, domestic violence, and the support staff that you have that aren't really staff, but kind of are. Is there anyone, have the unions or staff representatives or volunteer boards weighed in on this at all, and what they feel would be appropriate for this bond measure? Are they allowed to, or?
I don't think they've particularly talked about size or anything like that. I think they're all just looking forward to a new police facility.
Okay.
Counselor, I do want to follow up on your question about the library board. Would you like to have, in advance of any action, some sort of statement from the board? Or is that something you'd be looking for?
I think that it would go a long way if we were writing a measure?
Yeah.
To have support from library and police supporters?
Okay.
I know, looking at the testimony from individuals tonight, and how someone made the comment to find a strategy to appeal to voters, I think that's a big part of it, to say, you know, coming from the domestic violence group or coming from the library board, this is, we're recommending going forward with this.
Great. It's a very good point. Thank you. Thank you for that suggestion. You heard that, okay. Counselor Lewis?
I mean, I don't mind anybody chiming in, but I don't see the library board or folks that are involved with domestic violence having the expertise to get into the nitty-gritty about a police facility. Certainly, the inclusion of those organizations are part of it, but, I mean, I just, I don't see that.
In this case, Counselor Lewis, because part of the renovation involves the library roof, it could potentially be an opportunity for leverage of funds, but it also greatly impacts those services.
Could be. But my question, well, actually, I got a comment, and again, I'm not sure who to direct this, that city staff level, but the Commissioner, or Counselor Cook's question about what happens if there's money left over? And I think we have a good example from the Streets and Bridges Bond Measure. Granted, the money that was left over from that was quite sizable because of the economic conditions, but it does show the process that the city goes through. As long as it's written in the ballot measure, what you do in case there's extra money, and then you follow that process. But it is a process. It's not folks going into a closet and saying, we got $5 million left over, and let's have a party.
And certainly, if I may, on the oversight, other communities have established citizen review groups to kind of keep an eye on the project. There are techniques that could be used to enhance the perception, if not the actual reality, of stewardship and oversight and accountability.
Thank you. Counselor McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple questions. One of the reasons, as I recall, and maybe I'm wrong, was that we had that second story to the parking garages, because the Sally Port was up there, and it was one of the ways you accessed it, went in and out, right?
I'm not affiliated with the port.
Sally Port?
Sally's port.
Is that right?
So, the Sally Port would be down on the main level.
It's on the main level.
Yeah, and so the holding cells would be down there, and so the officers would be able to pull in there. They would be able to unload evidence. The K-9 officers would be able to pull in there and get, and those kinds of things. So that would be on the ground level. And then the second level would just be for the, where the patrol car would be waiting for the officers to come on shift or off shift and that kind of stuff.
Could all the cars be parked on the ground now? If you didn't have that level? Just curious? Because you've gotten rid of a whole bunch of parking spots that were somewhat...
No. So, right now, with the numbers that we gave, and, yeah. So, we've cut from what the recommended number was, it was 288 are our current peak demand, and we've cut it down to 275 parking spots. So, even now, at this level, there'll be overlap and the need for, or potentially the need for people to find other parking.
I thought you just told Counselor Anderson that 43 spots or something went away when WVCC came out of the plan?
Yes.
Which is not showing there.
So, what the table represents here is the current peak demand, not including WVCC. There's, Thursday afternoon, there's 11 shifts that overlap, so this is the peak scenario when all those shifts are coming in or going out, and you need the vehicle needs for not only the fleet, but the staff. So this breaks down what's happening then. Our current design provides 100 spaces in the parking structure and 175 spaces at grade. The question's been asked, what if you got rid of the entire parking structure? You'd go from being about 12 or 13 spaces short to 112 or 113 spaces short to meet that peak need.
Okay. Thank you. You know, I've got a thing here. This has been T.J. Sullivan's testimony, and it goes back to something from the original discussion here, you know, where we've got, it's comparing different municipalities and square foot per officer. And it strikes me, and we're, and looking at this thing, it looks like it's where the proposal was, a little over 500 square feet per officer, and the International Association of Chiefs of Police standard was anywhere from 400 to 800 square feet an officer. What is it going to be now if we cut it down to 115? That's A. And B, it strikes me, a simpler way to reduce costs is to reduce square foot per officer rather than fool around with 1.8 to 1, when the 1 might not be right or sustainable or justified, rather than just jiggering numbers. This is a solid, okay, we're going to go from 500 to 400 square foot an officer, and that's 20 percent, which is whatever that is, $16 million. Simple way to do it than what we're doing right now. So, there you go. That's half question, half speech, I guess.
That was really interesting.
Thank you. My question is, with the plan as it is at 115,000, what is it square foot per officer?
635, 600. 181 officers would be 635.
Just a minute, just wait, just a second. Thank you.
Our sworn staffing is 190 with 150,000.
Brian, do you want to answer that real quick?
605.
Well, if they're still.
No, come on up. You can't do it from back.
You've got to have it on the mic.
Can't hear you. And I know we want to hear you.
Well, I believe I said that in my testimony. The FBI statistics, 2014, were the earliest for both Beaverton and Salem. And they, aren't there still 181 officers in?
190.
190? Okay. So it's going to be a little less. I calculated 115,000 divided by 181 is 635 square feet. So it's going to be, you know, I can't figure.
605.
Maybe 600 square feet or so. And so it's more than 400.
Well, my question then is, I'm looking at what we had when it was 146,000 square feet, and it says it's just a little over 500 square feet an officer. So what happened? Is it the WVC in there?
I believe that shortened so much. I believe thus, the projected number of officers in the future, because I criticize the report for that purpose, that they use current number of officers for, like Eugene, and then they use the 30 years from now, the number of officers for Salem. So of course, it looks like a very good ratio because you're projecting into the future.
Okay.
I'm sure that's correct.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, then I want to continue here then. Why would we want to be cutting costs and go from 500 square foot an officer to 635 square feet an officer if we're trying to reduce costs? Hell, we just kept it at 500 square feet an officer. It sounds like reduced the cost dramatically, let alone go to 400.
So let me, let me at least throw in one more factoid to try to help. One thing to keep in mind is the program, the major program element that's been eliminated is WVCC, and that contains no sworn staff, right? So that, so that's, that's the big reason why the square foot per sworn is going up.
I'm going to repeat, though, if we could live at 500 square foot an officer, and we've got international standards that say four to eight, why don't we go to four and just reduce the heck out of the cost of the building because it'll be a smaller footprint? Why does it have to be 635 square feet an officer?
I think you're, I think you're looking at 190 officers today at 115. We believe there's going to be growth in that, in that 30-year period, which reduces, obviously, if you add officers, it reduces the amount of square foot per officer. And I think we're forgetting that growth is built into this, into this building, and we're dealing with what we have today.
That's fine, then. I'd like to know, I'd like to know what the square foot per officer will be with the whole calculation and compare it to this charge. If it's 30 years, add it all in, and let's come up with a number.
One other, one other that'd be helpful, I think, would be to see what our square foot per officer is today. I'd be real interested in your current facility.
15.
Can they stand, are they sardined or?
215.
It's in shifts. They don't get to stand.
I'm sorry, I'm at a disadvantage because I don't have that chart.
Well, I would like to know along with that, because I think it tells us just a lot about the need here when you start realizing your officers are in 28,000 square feet or whatever the number is today.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Anderson?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Want to follow up a little bit on the parking. When the original structure was 166, and that 166 was for a two-story parking, I'll call it a garage, and there was other surface parking, the rest of the 200, whatever it was you needed, plus the 43 that were WVCC, those were already on surface. So what you have done now is taken that 166 parking garage, spaced parking garage, and reduced it to 100.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's good. And then, Mr. Mayor, we were talking about the potential of asking the people who testified.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And I think I just have one question. It relates to the square footage thing.
Certainly. Who would you like, who would you like to have?
Well, I'm going to tell, say who I've got questions for, because I really appreciated Garth's discussion of that square foot thing, and that seemed.
Garth, I guess you're being called up.
No, you're not, Garth. Who I'd like to talk to is, Mr. Turner was concerned about the parking garage and also raised the issue of the elevator. So I'd like his response. I'd also, Mr. James, Mr. Hines, and Ms. Kaltwasser also were discussing the cost per square foot issue, and that was before we had the explanation from Garth Randolph?
Randolph.
Randolph. I knew it wasn't Randolph, but I wasn't quite sure, Randolph.
Could you, Counselor, could you be specific what your question is?
Okay, yeah, yeah. They, each of these people who testified raised the, why do we have such a high square foot per cost compared to Beaverton? And Mr. Randolph gave us some explanation for that, and they were all here to listen to this, so I'm just curious as to their response only on the square foot per officer, the cost per officer.
Right. Okay. Great. Each of you are welcome to come up if you'd like to, to answer the Counselor's question.
Well, I'd be glad to go first, because I've been thinking, sitting here, and I can just say this publicly to Garth, that I thought that was great, what you did. I mean, we need more of that, where I really feel like I got my questions answered. No, it doesn't mean that I agree with everything, because.
No, it's good, though.
As we've heard, if Beaverton says 5% and we say 9%, that's something we can all talk about. It depends on what's the future holds in these Trumpian years, inflation, the economy.
Would you like to hear Anderson's question again?
Oh, okay. Well, so.
We're off, we're off target here.
Well, I believe you were asking about, you know, the cost per square foot. And I listened to all the reasons, and they made sense, but I think now the job for the Council, not for me, is to look at each of those factors that add up to, I believe you're correct, 13.1 million, and ask which of those can be reduced and which are just, you know, some are just the site, and that's right, and some are decisions, policy decisions. So, but I really do want to thank you for that, because I couldn't do that, because the information just isn't publicly available.
Anyone else? Suzanne, would you like to? If you'd identify yourself.
Suzanne Kaltwasser. And just to clarify, Salem Community Vision is torn on that issue in part because we didn't get these kinds of explanations. So we'll go back and we'll massage that. Now, speaking as an individual, okay? My Neighborhood Association had the opportunity to discuss this issue on Thursday when we had our meeting, and they based their discussion on what was in the newspaper and what they knew previously. Parking, for most of the people in the audience, was a deal breaker. They, they really haven't got a good explanation of why there needs to be millions of dollars put into a parking structure when there's one down the street. They feel that in design, you could probably get around your issues of what the police needs versus what staff would need. And I think that when I listened to Mr. Randall's explanation, he gave more justification for coming closer to what Beaverton is doing than what is being proposed. The other thing, you didn't ask this question, but I'll give it just for brevity's sake, is that they aren't sold on this central location yet. The voters just, you know, they just don't have enough information to get the buy-in that you need. They want precincts, and they think in 20 years, we're going to be going in that direction. So it's, it's going to be the bottom line, you know? A lot of them just aren't going to be convinced by all your arguments. They've made up their minds. This is what they want. This is what they're going to pay for.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Chief, you want to talk about precincts very briefly?
Sure. We, we discussed precincts at great length, and I think the experts have indicated until you're at a certain level of officers, whether it's 300 and, 300 or so officers, that you don't go to precincts because you're just not big enough. The second thing, when you have precincts, in some respects, you double your costs because you have to staff more than one facility. There's an expectation, if you have a precinct, there's going to be somebody inside that that can help you. And in many of the substations I've seen in other cities, I've never seen them open because they don't have people to staff them. So I think the fact that we've moved back to a 30-year building, I think in, depending on the size of this facility, in 30 years, precincts may certainly be an option that we would move to. But I think all of the experts that we've ever spoken to said, we're not big enough at the particular time to have precincts. And even with a one, one officer growth factor for 30 years, we still won't reach that, that level.
Okay, thank you. The city managers.
Chief, could you speak to the point that the deputy chief made earlier, perhaps put a little more detail on, on the response time and the operational challenges of the officers walking to the Marion Square Parkade? Then I'd like to share with Council our current usage at the Marion Square Parkade.
Well, it would be my goal not to have any, obviously, any marked units parked at the Marion Square Parkade. It would, I guess if that happened, it would have to be staff parking. But I will, I will just tell you that I'm not a fan of that. And maybe this is just opinion, but I will tell you, I have employees, both male and female, that get off at 2:00 in the morning. They're work, they're walking to, they're walking to their vehicles, and quite frankly, these are police employees. And whether we like it or not, we've seen issues with police coming under attack in recent years, and I will tell you, for the safety and security of police employees, I think they should be in one, in one location. I will let somebody else talk about the use of the Marion Square Parkade, but I think in a 30-year period, we are asking for a problem if we are trying to count on a parkade that at some times during the year is completely full.
Our overall usage right now is about 40%. Leased and committed spaces bumps that up to about 70%. It's, it's full at the peak shopping times, and as the residential demand for downtown increases, having spaces available to meet that demand for downtown residents or other businesses, I think is a careful consideration. And we can certainly provide a specific actual usage information for Council if Council is, is at all considering requiring the, the police department to use the Marion Square Parkade.
I would like that information.
With that, Counselor Lewis, do you have your hand up first?
I'm sorry, Jim, excuse me. There were two other citizens who testified who may want to, Mr. Adams and Mr. Turner and Mr. James, who may want to testify on the, on the, the cost per square foot that we were talking about. I don't know if they should.
I'll make a note of that. Counselor Lewis?
No, he's correct. And if there is anybody else that just didn't get over that before we.
Anybody else?
Well, thank you. I do respect Garth Randolph. Garth, been licensed for 30 years. I've been licensed for 50 years. Not that I want to make a big deal of that, but we're, we're friends. The thing, three things I think we could do to reduce the cost of this project is stick to the, and I heard the explanation, I would say, just like the city manager says when he sets the budget, and Beaverton sets their budget for their police facility, they set theirs at $389 a square foot, and they're stuck with it, they've got to build that. We should set $400, because when the school district told me that I had $15.2 million to build McKay High School, I said, hey, the average is 30 million to, I mean, to 50 million for a high school. How come 15.2? Well, that's all we have. Do your best with it. So we built the 100,000 square foot high school. It's not perfect. It doesn't have the fancy architectural thrills, but we did it for the budget. So I say, Council, set the budget at $400 a square foot, times 150,000, and that's your cost. And then I say, structured parking consultants told us $35,000 per square foot compared to a surface parking of $4,000, $5,000, $5 a square foot. Just eliminate the staff parking. I don't think it makes sense, and other police facilities have been built without any staff parking. We've got a parking garage a block away. There's the bus. There's bicycles, Counselor, you know? And so that's about 192 staff spaces? That would be a big saving. But my main, my main point about controlling the cost of this project is to do your seismic, a net seismic retrofit for both buildings, City Hall and Library, for $15 million. The engineer's estimate is $14 million. And Counselor Lewis's point about what's it going to look like, well, it's going to look like a structural retrofit of brackets on the wall and maybe some damaged concrete, but we'll fix that later under an architectural contract when we've got some money. But I say, keep, keep your discipline, keep your budget at $15 million, do both buildings, and keep your cost of the police facility down to $400 a square foot, and the public will accept that. And I think you can do something with the parking, will be an additional saving. So I think we've got to keep the cost down so that our voters will, will approve this.
Counselor Cook?
Doing what you're talking about is going to be difficult to, to sell, and I'd like to be part of the team that, you know, we could all join together and help sell this, but we've got to get the cost out of it.
Counselor Cook, did you have a question for?
For after Jeff Lewis finished.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
I, oh, gosh.
Excuse me, Counselor Cook. I think, Mr. Turner, do you want to?
Oh, yes, please.
On the square foot issue? And Mr. Adams has indicated he's not interested in testifying on that issue.
I got an explanation, which I wish I had heard at the Salem City.
David Turner, again, a citizen, my lone voice here, but I want to say after this presentation, that's quite helpful. But I do, on the parking garage, want to emphasize what I heard before last election and what I hear tonight, that still, as a citizen, makes me stop, is not putting words in people's mouths, but here's what I heard. It's not safe to walk from the police facility to the parking garage a block away in Salem at 2:00 in the morning. And is that the message that we want to give to the community? Because that stops me dead at that point, going, really? I don't think that's the message we want.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Cook?
So it's, I, just to kind of bring us on another facet from this, we talked about immediate occupancy standards for the police station and for first responders so that they're up and running. I'm not sure what the immediate level of a seismic event is supposed to be for that and the life safety standards, which would be for other buildings as well. So there's this undercurrent of preparation for a Cascadia event, which is kind of why we're compelled to do this, not only because of the cramped space and the non-functional space for job standards, but also because of the looming Cascadia event, whenever that comes. We had someone who testified about hospital needs are different than police needs or different than library needs. But I haven't seen, as Counselor Lewis pointed out, police standards fit best for the police station, and this is a technical field, and I understand that. But it's important for me to see coordination of these events. Salem Hospital is a trauma center for the region. We have jails. We have mobility issues. We have, significantly in my ward, with the amount of hills and the grade and potential flooding, a few, more than a few residents who could be homeless or in dire need. So I think it's really important when we forward this measure, although it may not seem related, that we're able to demonstrate coordination or at least a plan for that. I would suggest that in looking at these measures, so that it's not just how we're updating the police station, but how these updates will affect the community in a Cascadia updating the police station, but how these updates will affect the community in a Cascadia event. Not just that the police will be there and not have a police station that's collapsed on top of them, but how they will be able to get to where they're going, how I will be able to get to them, how people will still be able to get to the jail, how these things will happen.
Okay. Are you going to bring up the third bridge? Is that what you need?
No.
Okay. Ms. Lewis?
Can I?
Yeah. I thought that's where we were headed here.
Oh, no, no. No, not tonight. But I do have a question, and I'll start with the chief. This idea of a growth factor and the square footage per officer, to me, it really comes down to arithmetic. If you base your assumption on 1.8 officers, then you get to capacity quicker than if you base your thought on 1.0 officers. My first question is, I believe I heard you say that the average has been 1.8 over the last 40 years. But then I believe I heard Counselor Anderson saying that over the last 30 years, it's been 1.0. Did we like?
That was Mr. Heinz. Mr. Heinz said that.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just wondering, 30 years ago, do we hire, like, tons and tons of police officers to take it from 1.8 over 40 years to 1.0?
Well, I have a chart from '84 through today, and it would take me a while to decipher it, but in '84, '85, we had 135 officers. In '07, '08, we were up to 196 officers, and we are currently at 190. So there's been, there's been no growth, there's been rapid growth, and many times in police hiring, it's based on community needs. For instance, years ago, we hired six officers to create a street crimes unit, just as an example, and so it varied from year to year. That's the best I can tell you.
And what I'm hearing you say is over 40 years, which is a good chunk of time, it's been 1.8.
Over 40, 40 years, it was 1.8.
I'm going to add to that, and I think someone made the comment, and I don't know if it's necessarily true, that we're in a more dangerous world since November, but there's a lot of stuff going on all around us. The idea that we're going to all of a sudden get safer and not need police force, it defies common sense. But back to the arithmetic question, assuming that it's 1 instead of 1.8, and we build 115,000-square-foot facility, how soon will we be to capacity? And I know that may not be a question you can answer right now, but I think that's something that's important, because it really doesn't matter how big it is or how fast we grow. You use the numbers to do the arithmetic, when do we get to capacity? We could build, as was suggested not that long ago, a 75,000-square-foot police facility, and quite frankly, on day one, my guess is, the police officers would be damn happy to double the size. But would we be at capacity the next week? That's really the question for me.
Okay, we're rapidly approaching closing time here, so I'm going to have the city manager kind of summarize where the staff hears us at this point, and perhaps explain to us where we're headed next.
You've got five minutes.
So this better, you've got about five minutes.
Well, first, what I heard is specific follow-up information requests or actions that councillors would like to see. One is a request of support from the library board. Second was analysis or additional information regarding if we were to reduce the square foot per officer, why not do that rather than reduce the growth rate? And then third was the Marion Square Parkade usage current. And I'd also like to have our urban development director comment on, have her do a little crystal balling as far as the growth of downtown, what we're seeing in the downtown already. Those were the three specific information items. I don't know if I missed any.
Forgot mine with the Cascadia follow-up.
That one's a little more challenging. We can certainly provide some narrative in regards to how a police facility would fit within the overall community's response to Cascadia, but I'm not sure there would be much beyond what the chief could probably say right now to that. But we can certainly provide some comments, commentary regarding that.
Yeah, great, good. That'd be helpful, I think, to do that.
I was just going to say, I think, I see your hand up, so go.
No, go ahead. He's had his turn.
I think I heard when you were speaking back that to compare the cutting the square footage per officer versus the cutting the growth, and I think what I heard was maybe doing both, like, considering both, if we're doing a one officer per year growth and the, yeah, looking at that, where I think we're at like 522 square foot in the future, and so what would it be if we get down to 500 or 450?
Okay, that's very clear, okay. Counselor Anderson, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. I have a few more questions, and I would be happy to just send them to the city manager to get a response.
Would that be okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
And I know there was some point of consideration of another work session on the 21st, and I don't know if, it may be instructive to have one, you know, in light of the questions we've asked.
Well, I think we need to have the manager explain to us where he sees us next.
Yeah. If we're going to be voting on this on the 27th, and I think we should, maybe we need the other work session.
Okay. So, do you want to? Okay, we are going to vote on this on the 27th if we're going to vote at all, or before. And I think the question now, we.
I'm sorry to interrupt. If I can just add, if you're voting on adopting a resolution to refer this to the voters on the 27th, we need direction now or on the 21st, when the next work session could potentially be about what you want us to bring you to vote on.
And I think the, I hadn't, we either need another work session or we need to agree tonight what a couple of options look like, that you would like to have brought, because they can write up a couple of resolutions that we could have brought to us. I mean, would you like to see one, one resolution that does the $69 million police facility only brought to the, these are the ones I heard tonight specifically. And the other was about a $64 million with a 15-point, police facility with a 15.3 retrofit on the library. And they had different assumptions behind them, but they seem to be the two things we're talking most about tonight. Would those be the two that would allow us to make a decision on the 27th or before? Would those two sound okay to you?
I think so. I know for the people in my ward, the library was the hangup.
Right.
And a lot of it was because if they are not able to go home, they could come to the library.
And there's a police officer nearby. Exactly. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of going any further tonight. I am in favor of having another work session. And I don't want to jam this through just to get on the ballot in May. I think the police department deserves more than that. So I'm interested in taking the time necessary to do it right, and if that brings us to a May election, so be it. If it brings us to something after that, that's fine, too. We don't really know what we're going to be competing against in the May ballot either. I'm not suggesting we wait till November, but May is going to be a time where other people are going to be bringing money measures forward.
Well, what's the?
I guess the question I'm asking is, do you want to have those two brought to you as a resolution, or are you not prepared to have?
No, I'm not prepared to have it limited to those two.
Okay. Counselor Anderson?
I'm prepared to have it limited to door number two, which is the reduced cost of the police station and the seismic. And it seems to me if we are going to, I agree with Counselor Lewis, that we want to make sure we do this with, so we understand and so we can then explain it to the public. And if that can happen, we're certainly going to have to have another work session. And I will submit some questions in writing. I have three or four issues that were not responded, and those can be responded to at the work session.
Well, okay, that sounds great. Do you want to make a motion?
I want to respond to your question first. I'm not, I'm not prepared to recommend, I'm with them, I want another work session to suss this out. I feel this is really getting rushed. We just got this dumped on us on Thursday. We weren't part of any discussion developing these plans, and we're trying to now suss this out, get it to a vote on February 27th, or we can't do it in May. And, you know, we just lost the election where we waited until July, and so we had July, August, September, and October, four months to try to get it, the campaign done to get it passed. Now we're going to be there basically in two months, March and April, to get everything from ground zero, running up and running, and try to get this passed. And I'll say the final thing, I remember this from last time, we, I asked the pollster when we got the polling numbers, when we just, one of the issues we decided to move forward, is it better to do it on the primary or in the general? Well, definitely the general. We just lost in the general, which was the more preferred election, and now we're trying to run something up the flagpole, jam it through in two months for the election date that is not the desired one. And I agree that you deserve more than that, and if I'm not comfortable that what we're doing here is going to pass, or we've got the ability to get it passed in that short amount of time. So I'm really uncomfortable with this process right now.
Sure, sure. Well, I hope, I hope discussing issues is not a process question that makes you uncomfortable. I really think that's what we're doing tonight and exploring them. All I'm trying to do is see, because of what the city attorney just said, would you like to have a resolution before you? And I guess what I'm hearing generally is no. You would like to come to another work session, unable, you know, and wait until then to develop the language and then have a third session that allows you to vote. We could do this in a work, not a work session, but a public discuss, you know, say, an information item at our 13th council meeting. Do you want to try for the May ballot? I mean, are we making a mistake at assuming you want to aim for the May ballot?
Just some feedback, I understand that the measure didn't pass, but I think it's a mistake to feel that we have to start from square one, as you were saying, because I know most people in our neighborhood associations and in the groups that I talk with, whether it be the library board or moms groups, people all understood that we needed a new police station. It's just the cost that things boil down to. And also, I feel it's the people speaking tonight said that when we aren't able to give answers to questions, people didn't want to vote in that same way. So it is worth a shot. I know that we've talked about previously, if we have a measure that doesn't pass, we try it again, what are we leaving as the third alternative? And making sure that we're successful in doing it. I think we all want to make sure that we're not in a position where a measure doesn't pass in May, and then we're left figuring out what to do.
Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, similar line. If we add in library seismic or civic center seismic, we're back at the same dollar value, close to $80 million, and people will say, "What the heck are you doing?" So as far as what do we put up to them, not a clue. And with two months to try to push something different and get a new message out, most, I think most of our citizens don't know the extent of what we're actually trying to get. They may very well want a police facility, they were looking at the dollars, and they were looking at some other big dollars on the general election as well, so we don't really know if it was a protest against taxation or protest against specific project and its cost per square foot. So it's like, where do you go?
Counselor Anderson?
Believe it or not, I'll try to be brief. I think the ballot measure lost for two reasons. One, it was too much for the police station, and two, it did not have seismic retrofitting. And this discussion we've had today takes care of both of those. It cuts down the cost of the police station by a huge amount, and it adds library retrofitting. And I don't think we even need to get to the civic center, because that's one of my questions. I think, Mr. Dan, and there are design defects in this building as opposed to the good bones that we ought to look at. So I am actually in favor of bringing forth the number two potential resolution for the work session, but I think that I am in the minority there.
Making a motion?
Well.
Well, why don't we find out?
Okay, I move that we hold a work session on February 21st, and at that time, the city attorney present us with a draft of a resolution to bring before the voters, which has the reduction in the police cost, station cost, as well as the library seismic retrofitting.
I second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to bring forth one resolution at this point we'd have available to us. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm misunderstanding the rules, but I didn't think at a work session you could make motions and pass this.
No, actually, you're able to make motions, there's a council rule that talks about not making substantive final decisions, and this would just be me to do some homework.
Just help guide staff to help you make a final decision at a later meeting.
And supporting this doesn't mean this is your final vote. This is just, this is, we need to start getting some vehicles on the table that let us talk about this issue. That's the idea, I think.
So could I ask for the repeat of the motion?
I move that we hold a work session on February 21st, and at that time, have the city attorney present us with the draft of a resolution to bring before the councillors on the May election to include the police station at $63.9 million and the seismic retrofitting of the library complex at $15.3 million.
You've all heard the motion, is there any further discussion on that? Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, we have the option of no facility, library seismic as well, and to not actually have it as a potential, I won't vote for just one, because I don't think I would push for that.
Would you like to amend his motion to include?
I would actually include two resolutions to be brought forward, one with standalone police facility and one with police facility and seismic.
So it would be Counselor Anderson's motion, would you like to do the specific one recommended, the $69 million, or would you rather leave that open?
Actually, it'd be nice to have, it's not going to take staff much difference as far as writing up a resolution, correct? So why not have all three options sitting in front of us, and then we can choose to go forward or not?
So point of clarification on your motion, you're asking for the library and the police station, the civic center and the police station, and just the standalone police station? Those were the three brought before us tonight?
I.
No, we need to get it.
No, I don't want the civic center included in that.
Okay, so just standalone police station.
But I think we should have both potential police facility, actually, if I can restate my motion. Or my amendment would be to also bring forward both police facility options as standalone resolutions.
And based on the city attorney's whatever reply, I accept that as a friendly amendment. So we will have the two options that were given to us at the beginning, we will have resolutions for both of them.
Okay. We don't have friendly amendments in our rules, though, correct?
As the city's parliamentary, and I can tell you that once a motion's been seconded, it belongs to the body, not to the individual, so there's no such thing as a friendly amendment at this point.
I second Mr. Nanki's motion.
Okay.
So we need to vote on the amendment, and then the main motion is amended.
Okay.
So two votes quick.
Everybody ready? All those in favor of the amendment from Counselor Nanki, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, so now we have a motion.
As amended?
As amended, which everyone understands, right? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, we'll have a couple of options in front of us at our next work session. And we'll, I don't think we were specific on the date, we'll try to make sure we all have, are here at the same time and place, but it'll be before. before. We're aiming at a May election, if we can get there.
Yes, that's right. And I think at one of my iterations, I said February 21st.
I know, I thought you might have slipped on that. I mean, we off on that one. We'll get it right on that. Yeah. I guess that's just bookkeeping.
A lot of times we just leave it.
Okay. Well, then, unless there's any further business, we are adjourned.